Reporting the minutes of the council meeting of 2020. 2022.
Oh, really? Is it on?
Yep.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join us for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bruno, Mr. Denny, Mr. Humphrey.
Here.
Mr. Johnson, here.
Here.
Mr. Trump, here.
Here.
Adequate notice in this meeting has been provided indicating the time and place of the meeting, the proposed agenda, which notice was posted, made available in newspapers and filed with the clerk of the town of Clinton in accordance with section 3 of chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975. NJSA 10:4-8B authorized municipalities to conduct public meetings for the use of streaming services and other online meeting platforms. Public Law 2020, Chapter 11, amends Oatman to clarify that in times of emergency, public bodies may vote, except public comment and cause meetings to be open to the public via electronic means. Town of Clinton is using Zoom video meetings. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for the public record. Zoom is imperfect, so if glitches pop up, please be patient. We will address all public comments for any topic not on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Questions and general comments on agenda items can be asked after council's completed discussion. We will take comments during the public hearings of any ordinances on the agenda. Please use the chat feature in Zoom to indicate that you wish to be recognized for a comment. You can also type in your questions. Feel free going forward to email councilmeeting@clintonnj.gov with any questions or concerns between meetings or questions you would like answered during future council meetings. You must provide your name and address to be recognized for comment. We ask that you keep your device muted until called upon by the council. Meetings moderated may also mute participants. Can I have a motion to approve the regular council meeting and executive minutes from July 27?
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and executive session from August 19?
It's a move.
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have to abstain from the special meeting.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the July monthly reports?
Second.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Is there anything from the public that's not currently on the agenda that they would like, that someone would like to discuss? Mr. Brunel, just name an address, please.
My name is John Brunel, 76. I'm sure you'd like a few minutes of your time. I have two things I'd like to address tonight. First is I'm concerned about the political signs in town. This is August, and there's hundreds of signs all over town. I think they, the town ought to consider, I understand it's a person's constitutional right to put a sign up in front of their house, but I think perhaps the town could ask the candidates to remove them until perhaps October 1st, so that we don't have to look at them every day. We know who's running for council, and I would just like to make that suggestion. Just my opinion.
Fair enough.
The second thing I'd like to address, and this isn't easy because I've been a resident of Clinton for 22 years. The 20 years prior to that, I lived on the edge of town. I don't think anybody would question my love for this town, what I've tried to contribute, and how supportive I've been of everybody in the government, everything else in this But I'm disturbed by something, and I've formed a few opinions. And I'd like to preface this, that these are opinions. They're opinions of mine, based on what I perceive to be facts, and anybody is welcome to discuss this with me privately, and I'm not going to bore you with what you already About three or four weeks ago, it came to my attention that, well, I was reminded that the town has been talking about spending $1 million on a playground. And that threw me. I did a little research, and that seemed like an exorbitant number. I found out that the town spent $25,000 in 2019 with Suburban Engineers. This was made aware to me by a member of council, unsolicited, by the way, $25,000 to have renderings done that nobody's addressed. I was told that these drawings were done so that we could attain grant money. $25,000. I saw the renderings. I could have done them on my computer. My opinion. Fast forward. A few weeks ago, I learned that the town was ready to spend more money on engineering than an RFP was created by the town to hire a company, same company, Suburban Engineers, to do the same thing that was done in 2019. So I asked some questions. I was told that this was done in order to retain the grants and obtain the grants and all that, and I thought, well, so far to date, I think we've attained about $175,000, something like that, maybe 190, I don't know. But we spent $25,000 off it three years ago, and we're about to spend probably another 20 or 25,000, in my opinion, to do it again. And that's when I started becoming a little concerned. So I went online, and I was told by a number of people that we could not do a community-built playground here. I'd heard about community-built playgrounds. When I researched a dog park, I found out that a lot of dog parks were community-built. And I did some research, and I found out that, yeah, it's widely done. But I was told that that's impossible. That can't be done, because we want to build an inclusive playground. Well, I found out that we can build an inclusive playground, an ADA-approved inclusive playground. My research led me to the town of Glassboro, New Jersey. I called up, they have a very, you're welcome to look it up, they have a very prolific website that describes exactly what they did with their playground. They built a beautiful, I'm sorry, they built three playgrounds. And Mr. Perloff and I saw them all. We drove down, our time, our expense, we drove down to take a look at it, on their invitation. Come on down, John. Hector Cabasis and Joe Blandino, nicest guys you'd ever want to meet. These guys are proactive. They wanted to get something done for the town, and they're very proud of what they've done, and so they should be. They did three community-built playgrounds there. They contracted with a company called General Conditioning, or General Recreation. General Recreation has a contract with the state. There's multiple companies that have a contract with the state. They're already pre-approved to do the work. They put it out to bid, they got a few prices, and they decided on General Recreation for two out of the three playgrounds. They hired another contractor for one of the playgrounds they weren't so happy with, but they still did a good job. Well, I learned that our little bid on the playground was $137,000. It seemed like a lot of money to me, in my opinion. When Mr. Cabasis told me that they built three playgrounds, and Mr. Perloff was there, for $175,000, how'd you do that? And I was told, they opened all their books, they showed me all the drawings they got for free. General Recreation did all the design work. I understand they consulted their architect, but General Recreation is like what Brunel Construction used to be. It's a company. We come out, give you an estimate on your house, we do all the preparation, all the legwork, and we present you with a price. So that's what they did. Then we went out, we toured, well, three playgrounds. They're beautiful. The biggest of the three playgrounds was built in one day, at a cost of about $60,000, something like that, $65,000. Playground that probably would be about the amount of equipment we would put into ours. So we saw all three playgrounds. That's another story. That's coming up down the road, and we're not going to talk about that tonight. But what I'm here to talk about is the tennis courts. And while Kyle and I were there, Mr. Cabasis says, oh, would you like to see the tennis courts that we did before you go? I said, yes, take a look at them. And he drove us over to eight tennis courts that, after seeing pictures of our court that I took, were in no worse shape than ours. Our former tennis court. And it had a beautiful surface on it. They hired a company named Matiflex out of Utica, New York, and what Matiflex provides, which my understanding the town was aware of, is a floating surface that is secured around the perimeter, and it's made up of individual 12-by-12 tiles that lock together. And they resurfaced with a few minor repairs, like our tennis court formerly needed, a few repairs, for $185,000. Eight tennis courts. It was a community-build project. The town was on board. All the i's were dotted, all the t's were crossed, nothing was below board. I have more information about that if you're interested, but Hector was a member of the town council for seven years. He just retired. Kyle and I kind of looked at each other, and you don't mind if I, we were there, right? So what the hell? What? How come we're paying 137 for one tennis court and they just did eight? So that got me, and it got Kyle, and we did a little more research. And we went back and forth with Mr. Cabasis and Mr. Blandino, and they forwarded us a lot of information about their court and their playgrounds. I spoke with General Recreation personally, their representative in New Jersey, and I found out all about the playgrounds. No problem with inclusive, no problem with ADA, all can be done, community build. I won't talk about them. The tennis court, I called it Matiflex, the company that makes the tiles that they contracted with. And I spoke with the general manager, the sales manager, whatever, Gabe, can't remember his last name, up in Utica, New York. And he said, send me some pictures. That's what we usually do. People send us pictures of their court, and we look at them. We've seen a million tennis courts. I went over, took some pictures, good pictures, might not do that, and sent them up to Gabe. Five hours later, I had an email with a quote for $34,000. What the quote is, it includes all the tiles. I know a lot of you know this, I know you know, but I'm stating this for the public record because I can, because I'm a citizen, and you work for the citizens of town. You're all elected officials. So $34,000. Gabe and I spoke on the phone. I tried to present this information to the town and was dismissed. Somebody not on council, an elected official, practically thrown out of the office. That's my opinion. I'm not saying it happened, but that's my opinion. I spoke with my attorney before I came down here tonight. I asked, understanding that the contract had been signed, that counsel was presented information that I believe, in my opinion, was erroneous, but based on that information, they decided to go ahead, and they signed the contract. It's in the records. You'll hear tonight in the council meeting that they hired a contractor who started this So I asked Mr., can't remember his last name, Gabe. Gabe Martini, my favorite cocktail. Gabe came down. I said, do you have a representative in our area? This is a big company, Matiflex. They're all over the country. They've been in business, I think, 36 years. He said, yeah, occasion, you know, I have a representative, I'll let you know next time somebody comes down. I said, well, I got a little matter that needs to be resolved. I said, do you happen to have anybody in the area? He said, I'll get back to you. And the next day, he got back to me, and he said, I can be there at 11 o'clock on Friday, last Friday. I said, you're coming down? I'll be there. Well, Mr. Martini drove all the way down from Utica, New York, four and a half hours to look at our tennis court. That's all he had to do that day. He said, I've heard about your town. It's a beautiful town. I went to college with somebody who lived there, and I've always heard it was wonderful. So I thought I'd take a trip. So I can't thank you enough for that. So we looked at our court after the gate was unlocked eventually. And Kyle was with me, and he looked at that court, and he said, this court's in excellent shape.
Gabe said that. Gabe said that, right? I was with you, Gabe said that.
Yeah. He said, this is in really good shape. This is better than most of the courts that we go over. He says, I could tell from your photographs. That's what he said to me. That's a fact. He said, you've got some cracks here that could easily be repaired. And I said, yeah, I know. And I won't go, I won't bore you with how cracks are filled. I think I sent everybody a YouTube video about how cracks are filled, that the town, in my opinion, could have filled these cracks with people we pay on an afternoon, maybe a day. So he said, all you got to do, oh, there's no heaving in the court. Heaving is when frost gets underneath the court and disturbs it. You get this. None of that. There was barely a watermark on the court. He said, have you looked at the court after rain? And I said, well, we haven't had rain for a month. He said, yeah, it looks a little dark over there, that spot, I think it looks a little dark, and let's go over and look at that. Looks like maybe a little water accumulated. So we got down, we looked at it, it might be an eighth of an inch or something, tiny depression, because that's not a problem. I said, do we need to put an elevator in there or something? Their surface is very forgiving. If there's a little something wrong on top, this thing floats. It's like a floating floor that you'd put in your living room or kitchen. So anyway, they guarantee their product on a court that they approve for 15 years. They replace any tiles that are a problem for the first five years for free. They have courts that have been in place for over 20 years, and they'll give you references to people. They can guarantee that, but this is what I was told. So he approved the court for their installation. And I was very upfront with him. I told, Gabe, we had lunch, and I told him that I paid for it. You wanted to pay for it. I said, nah, it was you. He loves our town, by the way. We sat down, town luncheonette, had lunch, he just loves it. And so anyway, they can get their product to us in two or three weeks. With the volunteer build, which they do all the time, it could be built in a few days. He said, we would allow three days, but it probably wouldn't be that with volunteer I know somebody might say, we can't hire them. We can't hire them because they're not just that and the other thing. Well, scores of towns in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, Illinois, Maryland, Delaware, and more have hired them to do this work on municipal property. Are we that exceptional that we can't? In my opinion, we're not, that we can do this, and the playground. They do not have a contract with the state, so I'm not exactly sure how that works out, but I know that there's, I know how it can be done. So I have a motto. I have a few. One of them is never look back, at least not with a magnifying glass, and I know that's what I'm doing tonight. And I really don't want to be sitting here. But I hope that when we build this playground, that it's not repeated. I believe, in my opinion, that enough information wasn't provided to you. I'll leave it at that. I was told in closing that the tennis court was to begin construction in early September. What I was told. But they showed up today at 8:00. How'd that happen, I wonder? When I was informed that they were there, I understand an email blast went out last night or yesterday or something about the playground starting tomorrow. I always get the email blasts. I get the email blast that the garbage is going to be collected at 6:00, not 7:00, and all that stuff, but I didn't get this one, and neither did somebody else, who always gets this email. A very influential person. So they started at 8:00 this morning, and I wandered over there to watch. And when I got there, I ducked underneath the caution tape, and 75% of the playground was already ripped out. Tennis court. Thank you. Tennis court.
Tennis court, yeah.
Ripped out. I had a contractor, Eagle Fence, come over and look at the fence last week. He said, what am I doing here? What's wrong? I said, well, he goes, well, one thing you definitely have to, don't have to do is take out your poles. These poles are in excellent condition. They're plumb, that means they're straight, they're solid. And he said, the most expensive part of replacing a fence is the poles. Your poles are fine. He said, your fence can be repaired by taking the ties that secure the fencing to the poles off, pulling the fence tight, as tight as you can, and retying it. Is it going to look like Forest Hills? No. But it's a recreational court. He said, but I'll give you a price on it. I said, yeah, I'd appreciate that. And he did. $18,000. That's not a prevailing wage. Kick it up 10,000 bucks. So I learned, he also said, they do a lot of tennis courts for homeowners, for municipalities and everything, fencing. He said, I look at a lot of tennis courts. What's wrong with your tennis court? I said, well, that's another story. So it's my opinion that we could have gone down a different road, and it's too late. I spoke with the people at the tennis court this morning who were doing the work. I walked on site. One of the guys came up to me. He says, can I help you? And I said, yeah, who's in charge? What's going on? He goes, first thing he said to me, he said, are we in the wrong place? Laughing. And I said, no, you're in the right place. He goes, when we got here this morning, we thought, why aren't we here? I said, no, no, you got the right place. So he called the guy down from the milling machine. That's the giant machine that rips out the tennis court. And the guy got off. The guy's the owner's son. Mike Smith's the owner. This was his son, Jordan. Mike Smith's the owner. This was his son, Jordan. Jordy. And the first question I asked Jordy, after I introduced myself, is, "Weren't you guys supposed to start in September?" And he said, "I don't know. They told us yesterday, we're coming here today." "You didn't know until yesterday you were coming here?" "No." I own a construction business. I ran big construction projects. Construction people know. He's a foreman. He's the owner's son and he's a foreman. And he said he didn't know he was coming here until yesterday. That makes me think. So, we spoke a little while. Nice guy. We had another conversation that I won't talk about, but anyway, never look back. So I'm done. I'm here to ask you to, um, and it's been confirmed to me already by some people I really respect and love, actually, that the playground is going to be handled differently than the tennis court. That it's understood that a community build can be done at a fraction of the cost. And what disturbed me, and the main reason I'm sitting here, is that we're spending $137,000, which would have paid for a tennis court and a playground. But you can't go backwards. And that's my opinion, by the way. Just my opinion. So... Any questions? No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let me say that we do, John, let me just say that we do appreciate the fact that you've taken the initiative and the time to do all that you've done. As I said to you this morning, a lot of people will complain, but very few people will actually do the research, and for that, we are all grateful. It may not seem that we're grateful, but we are grateful for the work. The only thing I'm gonna tell you is, don't go under the caution tape anymore. Don't go under the caution tape.
I live under the caution tape.
I know. Just be careful. So, thank you. I will, before you leave, and this is for everyone, September 28th, our council meeting, we are going to have, our focus, our council meeting on the playground. So... Thank you.
And I understand that I will become a part of that discussion.
You will absolutely be.
I dearly want to do that and contribute a lot of information that I gather.
As I said, share with what you've got, what you found, so that I can at least share it with Tara to take a look at as well. And we will definite, like, we're gonna have an entire conversation. There, we need to regroup, and everyone is apprec, like I said, appreciative of all of your efforts. You've done research that others may not have done, but would sit in this room and yell at us for. So, thank you.
I won't say it. I respect you for that. I respect all of you, and I know everybody's doing their best.
We all have the same goal. We all have the same goal. We all have the same goal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have public comment? Name and address?
Lisa Trivartola, 19 George's Place. Do we need to pull this up? I didn't really want to grab a seat. Okay, that's gonna be tough to follow, but I'm gonna try. I am here as a representative of the Booster Club in town, the Friends of the Town of Clinton Parks and Events. It's very long, so you could just call us the Booster Club. I have a couple of members with me. Molly Padmos is here, and Nicole Ayers is here. I am the treasurer of that group, and we've been getting rolling. So, I just wanted to offer an invite to the Park Committee. We already have Councilwoman Johnson, who joins us as a liaison every month. And since Councilman Perloff, you were able to join another member of the community to do research, we'd invite you to come to our Booster Club meeting.
Thank you.
And to see what we're doing, and also to, now, Councilman Bruno's not here tonight?
No.
Okay, can we extend? I will, I will send him an invitation.
Okay.
So our next meeting is on the 19th of September.
Can you let Aunt Nick know?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll, I'll follow up with an email as well.
Otherwise, I'm gonna forget.
And I, I understand, Rich, I'm not sure if you were told that.
I didn't ask you yet.
Okay.
We use your office because it's environmental, of course.
Thank you so much for graciously offering your office to us.
No, we have, ours are Zoom. If you want to use this, ours are Zoom.
Oh, you're Zoomed?
Yeah, we're Zoom.
Oh, you're Zooming?
Okay.
Then never mind. We will not leave our fingerprints all over your office. So really, we just want to have an opportunity to, you know, hear what you guys are doing with the, the Park Committee, because we formed, as you may or may not know, in January of this year, which for a Booster Club and for a nonprofit is a very short amount of time. And in that time, we have hosted two fundraisers. There was the sneaker fundraiser, there was the color run for the children at the end of the school year, and then this Friday, I'm also inviting everybody to come to our next fundraiser, which is pints for the park, not pints in the park, unless we get a special permit. So that is going to be at Sunken Silo, and we have a band that's graciously offered. The Cave Crickets are gonna be playing, and it should be a really wonderful, wonderful thing. Excuse me?
You had us at pint.
See? So, yeah, we're, we got together, basically, I would love to say that we're parents, but we're also moms. And if you ask a busy mom to do something, it will get done. So I have no doubt that we're gonna reach our goal, and our goal really is to help all of you and to help the town, because I know I have two children, and I know Nicole has children that are young, Molly still has an eighth grader, and they all really want to play in a park. And this park kinda isn't up to par right now. So I'm hoping we can get things moving before our children age out of that park. So, again, we have hit the ground running. We have some really interesting asks out to the community. We've already gotten some great feedback and money. And, you know, we've done this blindly. We've done this with absolute faith and trust in our leaders, that they are going to have a plan. We've done this sight unseen. We have not seen the plan. All we know is that we see what's there now. And that's not sufficient. And we also, all are part of the Clinton Public School District, which is a multi-disabled school district, and we know that our children are raised to stand up and be a bulldog, and we're really excited about the possibility of doing something like the school did. By the way, that park was $90,000, $900,000, that playground. And it was using taxpayer money. So I just wanted to put that out there for anybody, based on that last conversation that happened. So parks are expensive. We know that. And we are fully, fully vested in making sure that this happens. We'd love to see some inclusive pieces, because we have, we know that not all children in this community play and think and walk the same way. We have neurodiverse children in our community. We have children with physical and emotional limitations, and, you know, when they all get to play together, they all grow up to be better humans. So, you know, we're, we're very excited. We know ADA is a wonderful thing, but I, I did leave council to take a ethics and law class, actually, to take 10 classes. One of them is ethics and law, and that's the one I just finished up. And I'm gonna just end with something I learned in my class, that the law is the bare minimum, and that's the ADA. Bare minimum. It was passed 32 years ago, right after this park was put in. And to be ethical is to take it a step above the law and to do better. And I, I always hear this town as being Norman Rockwellian, and I believe it. That's why I've been here for 17 years. So I'm hoping that we can take it a step above complying with the law and, and consider some inclusive pieces for that park. I think it would go a long way to enhance our community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what, what time on the 19th?
Anyone else have anything that's not currently on the agenda?
Can I stand here?
Yep, just name an address, please, Molly.
Okay. Molly Padmos, I'm at 16 Water Street, and I just want to just take a second to say how much I appreciate all of your hard work, and Megan, all of your hard work, and Lisa's hard work. And I really hope that we can all kind of meet together and figure out a plan that's gonna work, that will work for the town and work for both committees, the Booster and the Park Committee, which is part of our government, and just, thank you, guys.
And I probably should not have just said that.
That was recorded. I was gonna ask you, now I don't have to ask you.
And the last thing that I'll say, I guess, on that, is that I have every confidence in our elected officials, that when it comes time to really do this, that we're not gonna take the cheap way out, okay? That if we're gonna do this, that we're gonna do it right, that we're gonna take care of our kids and make this something that's high-quality, that's lasting, that serves the most number of kids for the longest time, and we can all really be proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate that. And, and here, let me just say this. Ultimately, we are all on the same page. The end result, which is a new playground. I have to make sure I say playground. And I think we're gonna.
I think we're all on board with a new upgraded park in general.
Yeah, but we're gonna start with playground.
We're talking about the playground.
Yes, I don't want to get too out of, so I think we're all there. Listen, obviously, we've, we all come at it from a different perspective, and I have, I appreciate everyone that gets involved, and everyone that steps up and wants to be a part of it. I understand that, that sometimes it, it appears we're bogged down, and yes, sometimes government does get bogged down. Can we do things differently? I think there are opportunities to. I, I had a, you know, just to John's point, I had a very long conversation with Mayor Wallace from Glassboro, who is, his mother is a dear friend of mine. His father was Justice Wallace, and I also spoke to their CFO. So I think, you know, I, I understand the conversations that they've had. There, there are some differences. Glassboro has a staff of people that work just on parks and playgrounds. You know, one of the things we need to look at are, and they don't have an inclusive park. They are just an ADA compliant park. So, these are the, these are the questions we need to ask, and that's why on the 28th, I want to have a community engagement discussion, so that everyone can feel as if their voice is being heard, and everyone that wants to step up and be a part of the discussion and the solution, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote Ally McGarren. Anyone remember Ally McGarren? Ally used to, she was my eighth grade social studies teacher at Clinton Public, and then she was also the mayor here, but she used, like, you couldn't complain to her, because she would say, "Now, Janice, in her teacher voice, you can continue to complain and be part of the problem, or you can step up to the plate and be part of the solution." I was kind of like, "Now I gotta do something." Just like Jonathan just volunteered. So, I, I really, I do appreciate all of you coming out. I, I, you know, I want us to, to embrace everyone's thoughts to get to the best possible solution. That's my objective with this. I don't want anyone to feel as if they are excluded in any way, shape, or form, because we've never, you know, I, I think we've always tried to be an inclusive government and open to suggestions and conversations. You know, sometimes we slip up, but we're human, and, you know, we take everything as a learning opportunity, and that's what I think, you know, the playground, you know, we're moving forward. Everyone's in the same, same goal. We just need to all get into the, you know, decide what that direction's gonna be to get to that goal. So...
May I?
Yes.
I was referenced a few times.
Just a few.
Personal information, not everybody knows this. My youngest daughter has three IUPs at school, one of which is a diagnosis on sensory disorder. My two oldest daughters are foreign-born. They're Mexican, in a very non-Mexican neighborhood and community. I've never once said to anybody here, or anybody outside of this room, that I was not for an inclusive park, or that I would recommend the cheap way out. I simply ask questions on what can we do? Not what can't we do, what can we do? And I'm so grateful, and I've never said this out loud, and I will now, I'm so very grateful for all of the work that Megan and the rest of the Booster Club is doing, has done, and will continue to do for our community. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with you guys and learn from you, and hopefully give you some, maybe some information that you guys learned also. And I too am excited to have my three young daughters have a playground and park that they are proud of, that they have fun at and enjoy. So, I concur. I believe our end game is the same, and I really look forward to the opportunity to work with you to get there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes. Nicole, just name and address.
Nicole Ayers, 18th Review. Kyle, like yourself, my children are of good grace. My children are biracial. My husband's half black. It is a very minority position to be in, in, in a community such as this. My daughter also is on track to have an IUP at CPS. I feel like ADA, with what Lisa said, is the bare minimum that we can do for the children of this community. I feel if we do anything less than inclusive, we are excluding our children. Our children are basically neurodivergent, and they have trouble interacting. They have issues with sensory. Cameron definitely does. I think anything less than inclusion at this point would be a disservice to a, a portion of the community just in this town that doesn't speak for the greater Hunter area. The Warren, we're very close to Warren County. That doesn't speak to what the community members in Warren County would come and use the park. We would be the only inclusive, all-inclusive, fully-inclusive park in northwestern New Jersey. I mean, you probably can't find another one for 30 miles. So, in my opinion, and I know we'll get into more discussion on the 28th, anything less than a fully-inclusive park is a disservice to our community and to our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, I know I've been mentioned, I appreciate the, the thanks. And just to give background on me, the reason I probably opened my big mouth to recreation in 2018 to look at this grant money, I'm a social worker who has over 20 years' experience working for individuals with disabilities. I do it every single day, and it's my love and passion. I am thankful that my children are what we call, you know, atypical development, and that's great, and they have their struggles every day, but I have a love for those who sometimes have shortcomings, and those who are a little bit less fortunate, and those, sometimes people need a voice. And I'm loud, and people might not like that, and they might not like me, but the only reason I started it is because I see a community that I love, and we talk about how we're stigma-free and how we welcome everybody. I feel like Clinton is a perfect place for that. For the meeting on September 28th, I've asked the family who founded Jake's Law Legislation in New Jersey to present on, you know, really what it's like to have a family member with a disability, and what the drive was for them to push the legislation in New Jersey. in New Jersey, and also what it really means to be all-inclusive. Because I think when we talk about it, some of the things have a big price tag. And when Lisa and I really started to drive down this rabbit hole of finding what all inclusivity means, it was about looking at the park to be fully all-inclusive, where we'd get a national certification, where we'd be marked on a map that said, "Come to Clinton, we've got this," which would also be an economic driver for our town. So, we thought about that aspect. We've had millions of conversations. I have pulled Kathy and Rich into 50 million of them, and of what can we do with this, how can we do this grant and everything, which I'm sure that drives them nuts. But we, you know, are working for the utmost goal. As many have said, ADA is minimal. Inclusivity includes a lot of different pieces. If we can get that national certification, amazing. If we can, we can, we get a little bit of something, awesome. Just want to meet somewhere where we can do above and beyond what we're, what people think is okay. The park currently, right now, was built in, we figure, 1988, prior to ADA laws. It's not ADA compliant. So, if you're wheelchair-bound, or you have a prosthetic leg or something, you can't access the park safely. It's really, you know, and that was really where we kind of drove down the hole of what can we do. So, that's how it came about. And I hope that, I mean, I, I think, I truly believe that we are a community or not just a town. That's why we live here. That's why we stay here, because my husband would move into second. But I truly believe we can come together as a community and meet. It shouldn't be so divisive. We're doing things. And I will, I'm putting on the record, I was pushing for the playground, not the tennis court at first. And I wanted tiles, too. We did a lot, you know, as a team, Rich, Kathy, myself, and Council, we did a lot of research of what we can and cannot do. And those are things that I was really pushing for. And so, as residents come here and think that I am leading this, this, we are a team. As much as you think that we sit on other sides of the, you know, the ticket, we are a team, and we have come together for years. And I do not make the sole decisions for this town. I bring information. And I hope I equip people with information so that we can make decisions together. But I really think that we can, our town is awesome. People come here from all over. And I think that we can make an amazing park, playground, tennis court, everything, you know, to bring our community to the utmost standard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, it's my report. Anybody else have anything before I go?
I do have one quick question. Just a, no, really quick, Jen.
Okay. All right.
Just so that we don't have to, you know, everyone's going to be at that meeting on the 28th, but everybody, I think a lot of people are going to be there. Is there going to be a time limit, hopefully, on comments? Because I hate to have some of the airs talked out of the room by a 45-minute he said, she said, and then they said they left Clinton so much, kind of conversation.
Fair enough. What we will do, if the family from Jake's Law will be here, they will be on the agenda with the presentation. Everyone else, we try to keep it to five minutes. This was a, this was a conversation I had had that if we didn't-
I get it. It was a therapy session, I understand. But, I get it.
There's always, there's always a timeline. Here's what it comes to. We try to be respectful of everyone wanting to share their opinion. And I don't want to cut people off and say, "You hit your five-minute mark." I get it. If it starts to ramble, we will manage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, just real quick.
Yep.
And it's just because-
I got a 30-minute report.
No, it's fine. I'm going to be there.
[laughing]
I want to, I want to thank John Bunnell because he brought about the importance of something that we've been stressing now for several years, and it's volunteerism.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's why I'm so glad that everyone in this room steps up as a volunteer. We run volunteer fairs. We've done two of them. We run it newsletters and emails. And if we had more people who had answered the call, including Mr. Bunnell beforehand, a lot of this discussion would have been taken care of, and we wouldn't have had to have this session. It just emphasizes the importance of getting out. We are a community of people who love the community, and we agree on most things. And those things, we don't, we find compromise, and we make it work.
Agreed. Thank you. All right. I'll try and keep mine to 29 minutes. Just a couple of things. Last Monday, Senator Booker was at the Red Mill with the, with a couple of mayors, a couple of business owners, and Councilman Trapphegan was there as well, in the county economic development. He is, he does his county tours, and he came to talk about tourism in Hunterdon and the initiative that Mark Salak has launched with the support of the county for, what is it called now? Now, I'm drawing a blank. Explore Hunterdon, sorry. The other side of Jersey. I'm looking at my shirt, and I couldn't remember. It was at, we had the commissioners there. We, like I said, we had mayors there. We had businesses there. And it was a good conversation where the senator got to hear how the American Rescue Plan money was alloc, that came to this county, $24 million came to the county, $250,000 was allocated to tourism. And that will continue to grow. So, we've had some great success with our tourism initiatives. If anyone knows, Frenchtown was named Best Small Town Shopping by USA Today. So, you know, all we can do to support our sister communities and around the tourism is just great. We see it here in town, everything that goes on, and all the amazing activities. You know, we want to see it benefited to the county. So, he heard about the Beer Trail. He heard about the 579 Trail. He heard about the Main Street, and then a bunch of other initiatives as well. The Hunterdon Games. Now, everyone in this room is a volunteer tribute next year. I know Nick's not here, so I can call him tributes.
I'm not doing the pie eating.
You don't have to. We're going to have time to plan for it.
No, no, you just, you just need to train.
We are gonna-
I'll pay for you.
Humiliating, and I got eighth place.
So, everyone that participated, I mean, I need to publicly thank everyone on Council because everyone, you know, stepped up. Sherri, you missed a great time. So, next year, we'll make sure you're around for it. So, so many volunteers. Nick isn't here because he has some war wounds from kickball. There was blood. There was blood with the joust, which is a blow-up joust.
Mike and Nick were very much sacrificing their bodies for kickball.
Mike sacrificed his knee. So, everyone that sacrificed, we do appreciate. I do have a special shout-out to Elvira because she herded the cats. Everyone. I mean, we got there, we had all the things allotted, and then everyone was like, "Oh, I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. I'm going to do this." She got everyone riled, corralled, and where they needed to be. So, a shout-out to Elvira for, thank you for that. The trophy was liberated from the winning. So, Town of Clinton came in second. Union Township came in first. Clinton Township came in third. The trophy was liberated from Union Township Saturday night. And toward Hunterdon County, it was not liberated by anyone in the Town of Clinton. But there are pictures of the trophy placed all over the county in different parks before it was finally returned, because I got the phone call at 6:30 that the trophy was missing. So, it has been returned. So, again, I think it was a great time. We had a, we had a lot of fun. I'm hoping that it gets bigger next year, and we're able to include more communities to be a part of it. And Senator Booker came for that and hung out. He liked the joust. That was his favorite. So, he was hanging with the joust.
If your leave was ready.
Yeah.
Next, for those of you that participated, The Haunting on the River. The world premiere is tomorrow with showings on Friday and Saturday over at the Red Mill. So, this is the movie that Mark from CitySpot wrote, directed, pre-production, post-production, composed all of the music for, I mean, he truly, this was a labor of love for him and everyone that volunteered on that. So, you know, hopefully, if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, he is not taking any money. All of the money raised from either the tickets or sponsorships are going to one of our organizations in town. So, you know, kudos to him because that was money out of his pocket, I'm sure. It was definitely time out of his, out of his life. So, August 31st is Overdose Awareness Month. Overdose Awareness at Open Door. I had Seal forward all of you, if you can make it there for the, just to be a part of it. I think it's, it's great to help. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. There'll be some speakers. Registration is required, so if you can make it, that would be great. Oh, and dinner will be provided. Look at that. Go Hunterdon's Annual Meeting, again, you have to register for it, is September 23rd. If anyone wants to go, it's a breakfast. Harvest Hope Celebration. So, Seal, you forwarded that one, not to everyone. So, I asked the Red Mill. I'm not asking all of you guys, but I asked the Red Mill to help us do a scarecrow because, again, we have to compete. So, a scarecrow representing our community. And what better scarecrow than a haunted scarecrow, since we have the haunted mill in the town. So, we are going to work with Paul to get that done. I do need a approval from everyone. So, I called Sony CEO and asked for our, it's called Carpool Cinema. We can't call it a drive-in. So, it's a carpool cinema, or Wheels and Reels. That's the rules around it. So, they are giving us Ghostbusters without paying the licensing fee.
No, why?
1984. Yes. So, I just need an approval from you guys to sign the contract with, because I still have to go through SWAN because they have it. They're just waiving the licensing fee. So, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. And then, the last thing I have is, we had, while we hired two crossing guards last council meeting, we've just had two resignations from the crossing guards. Anyone looking to be a crossing guard? Anyone knows anyone?
Probably have us.
She'd be like, "Come on, sweetheart, let's go."
So-
And you look nice.
Heidi Bavaro and Karen Cruz are, have both offered their resignation. So, can I have a motion to accept their resignations with regrets?
I'll move.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right.
How long was Karen a crossing guard?
25 years.
One time.
Yeah.
They lost.
About 14, 15.
Really? Oh, that's right. Suzanne's been here the longest. I was thinking, because it used to be Sue-
Sue's Bolas.
Sue Bolas that was over here. Gotcha. All right. So, that's the extent of my reports. Next, we have three refunds, one for water, one for sewer, and one for aptive. Can I have a motion to approve the refunds?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Deneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Ms. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trapphegan?
Yes.
Mayor Colback?
Yes. Okay. Next is the introduction of ordinance 22-10, and this is the towing and storage. This is basically updating the fees to be in compliance with, across the board, right? Is my understanding?
What we did was we had the review because the tow companies, the cost are going up. We haven't changed it in a while. So, they have the Garden State Towing Association who recommends fees. But in looking at some of their fees, I just felt that they were a little bit too high. So, we kind of came back in and had the meeting and that's right.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The second reading will be on September 14th, our next council meeting. Next is Resolution 122-22. It's a Chapter 159, and this is for us to take in the $5,000 tourism grant that we received from the county for the superhero sprint. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Deneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Ms. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trapphegan?
Yes.
Yes. Next is Resolution 123-22. This is the fireworks at the town picnic. Woo-hoo. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Next is Resolution 124-22, and this is the purchase of a new truck for water. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Deneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trapphegan?
Yes.
Mayor Colback?
Yes. Next is Resolution 125-22, and this is an amendment to the Teamsters contract, and this is to create a non-CDL salary. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
I would, only because it's-
Yeah.
Ms. Deneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trapphegan?
Yes.
Mayor Colback?
Yes. Next is, ooh, 126-22, BYOB for the town picnic. We're just partying along here. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Next is Resolution 127-22, and this is approving a water capacity reservation. This is for the new Polytech building that's going up at North Hunterdon High School. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Next is the Resolution 128-22, refund of overpayment of taxes. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Ms. Deneen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trapphegan?
Yes.
Mayor Colback?
Yes. Next is Resolution 129-22, and this is opposing the proposed increases in the state health benefits plan. This is a resolution that came through the league, the conference, and the association of counties, and every other organization.
Yeah.
It's just because the increase right now is, is going to be significant to many of our budgets. So, can I have a motion?
If I may, I think it's worth mentioning how high that-
As much as 24%. As high as 24% increase.
It's significant.
It is. And when we do this, can you also send it to the league? Because they're collecting them. Took out a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Next is the banner request for the Clinton Guild. Now, there is an overlap of dates, but they are going to work with the Red Mill to figure out what dates. So, this is just approving the banner, and they'll determine the dates. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
I have one question about this, but the banner that was recently up came down.
Yes.
So, is there a way that that can be checked, and if, when it comes down, it can be put back up immediately?
It was torn. It had to be removed. But they had to get the truck out to remove it from the top. That's why it took a few days to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Next is the special event application. Run-of-the-mill. We're talking St. Patrick's Day, right?
She's ahead of the game.
They're eager.
They are. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
It's the same thing, right? Yeah. Got a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Friendly Sons are talking about an Irish festival that weekend as well. But I believe they're doing that over at the Red Mill. So, I don't know. If I find out, as soon as I find out more chief, I'll let you know.
Do you want me to handle it?
What's that? I'm going to have lunch with them on the 13th. So, if you want to join me, at Town Restaurant, with the Friendly Sons. I don't know if they're bringing anything with them.
Multiple shout-outs there.
Just a couple of quick things for correspondence. The Women's Club of Clinton is celebrating its 100th anniversary on Monday, September 12th. So, if anyone is interested, can you let Seal know, and she will RSVP? And then, just a reminder, the league, well, not just that, but it's the Women in Municipal Government networking event and the league delegates' luncheon, if anyone plans to attend those things.
There won't be a hiding contest.
No, there will not.
Did you send that to us yet? No.
What's that?
You didn't send that.
Okay. All right. I know. I keep getting emails from the league, like, you're not, I'm like, "I get it. We're going to register. We're going to be there." I have my hotel. That's the important thing.
Got all the badges today.
Thank you.
Oh, good. You'll start getting my badge next year, when I'm off the board. Oh, good. You'll start getting my badge next year, when I'm off the board. All right. Um, that's all we have in the way of correspondence. Reports. Chief?
Nothing.
Rich?
Nothing.
Kathy?
Nothing.
Mike?
Environmental Commission meeting was August 15th. Uh, we did not have a quorum, but we did have really interesting discussion, and an awesome guest. Um, so Councilman Perloff brought a fantastic idea. Uh, he was just looking for people who would buy into it, which is to bring the farmers market indoors. And, uh, the, the people who were in attendance at Environmental Commission, including one particular member, thought it was an awesome idea. Um, I went ahead, I contacted, um, Sustainable Jersey, who'd be willing to, um, seriously entertain a grant that can help pay for this, um, for next year. It fits, uh, the green team aspect, and also economic development aspect, which led to a discussion I had, uh, with the Hunter and Economic Development, uh, last week, and they are willing to put in, uh, PR efforts as part of the, um, their 179 trail, and in general, their, um, their fresh food, um, effort, um, PR effort. So, uh, I, I think that we, uh, we have to work out some details, um, especially how to cover, um, the insurance portion of having them in there, but, uh, I think it's an exciting idea. So thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the Clinton Leadership Roundtable, after a little bit of discussion with a few people, we'll push that off from September to the beginning of the year after reorg.
Okay.
So when we have new leaders in, uh, everyone gets a chance to meet each other, and, uh, and share their goals for the future, and we become familiar with, uh, people in other groups. So, um, and, last thing, I just wanted to say, uh, put this on the record, nobody on the staff of the Town of Clinton deserves to be treated with tremendous, the tremendous amount of disrespect that happens from time to time. These are, these are professionals. These are people who are trained to do their job, and they're good at it. And they're underpaid. And for people to come in and treat them, um, with the level of disrespect that's happened at least once lately, I just ask the public, um, if you're angry, take a breath, or take a day, and then come back in and talk to them, because you do not deserve the, the kind of treatment that they've gotten. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Seal?
If anyone has been paying attention to, you know, the legislative sort of blotter from the league municipalities, you've seen there's just been a whole lot of legislation coming out, um, putting responsibilities, let's call them nicely, onto municipalities. So I'm going to work with Rich and Seal, because we're going to have to do a couple ordinances coming up about lead paint, business insurance registration.
Stormwater.
Storm, yeah, there's going to be a lot of stuff, uh, over the next couple months. So just be prepared. We'll have to adopt a few, a few ordinances, probably assign some new duties to some people sitting at the table.
Kyle, you can't look away. It doesn't mean you don't get a job.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm talking about...
She's looking at me.
Yeah, I'm looking at Seal.
Yeah, she's the first one.
That doesn't work, Kyle.
I'm looking at Seal. Um, so we'll just have to, we'll, we'll have to cycle through that over the next, um, next couple months and get, get those up and running.
It's usually Megan's seat.
Um, anyway, I just have to say, please, just a public announcement, nobody go under yellow caution tape anywhere. That is, that is your attorney speaking. When I see a crack in the sidewalk, I look at it very differently than everybody else.
Okay, same way.
Yeah. So please, you see yellow caution tape, don't cross it. Just as a general rule of thumb, everybody, please.
Yeah. Anything else?
I, I'm...
Sure.
Ross?
My, it used to be an after you. We're all shifted tonight.
I know.
Um, Presi Squad met, uh, they had 367 calls for the month of July, and 2,779 for the year, which is actually an increase of 16 percent compared to last year. Uh, and they thought it important to note, uh, in terms of their coverage area, their average response time is seven minutes and 18 seconds, but for the Town of Clinton, it is six minutes and six seconds.
The increase, is that because they've expanded and absorbed? Do they think, or...
I mean, that's a component to it. It's always, you know, still...
I know, it's always, yeah.
Combined with, uh, as I think I even mentioned last time, just with the uptake, um, just medically related calls, more people being ill recently.
Yeah.
You know, why in particular?
Yeah, I didn't know if, if they were attributing any of that to the, to the merger.
Right. I mean, there's obviously some. Again, Hampton's the most recent, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for historic, uh, mark your calendars for Saturday, October 15th, starting at 7:00 PM. Uh, more information will come out soon, but the Historic Commission in the Presbyterian Church Cemetery is going to be doing a graveyard tour.
Oh, that's...
Uh, it will tell the history. Uh, there's a lot of really fascinating people that are buried in there that you might be surprised about. Uh, combined with the fact, I will leave it at this, because I've been told I'm not allowed to share certain details, but several of the members of the Historic Commission are a part of Haunted, so just expect some interesting things may take place, uh, while you're on this tour.
I remember that tour with Ally. She scared me.
Presbyterian Church. Go right on Saturday.
What was the date again?
Fifteen.
Yep, October 15th. Um, again, information will come out soon. There's going to be two different time slots. It's going to be seven, and I think the second one is 7:45, so it'll be...
Yeah, I want to go when it's less dark.
Well, it's going to be pretty dark by that point.
I know.
Um, and I just want to know, I was at, uh, just a couple hours ago, the opening ceremonies for the 4-H Fair. Um, so just to remind everyone that's going on, uh, it was talked about, Commissioner and Director Lands, I mentioned in the opening remarks, uh, talking about Hundredens agricultural history, combining that, obviously, to the tourism initiatives that are going on. Uh, obviously, a reminder, while we may not be a farming township, uh, obviously, our mills grind the grain for the farms along here, so we have our historic connection too. So definitely go down, enjoy all the festivities, uh, that are going on for the length of the week.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
That's all.
All right. Megan?
Um, I really don't have anything. Just a reminder, come out on Friday, Hinesville Park, um, for Oyster Club Raising Night for our park. Um, make $10 cover. Make sure you bring cash. There's lots of raffles, 50/50. It's going to be a good time.
What time does it start?
Seven, seven to 10. Um, Metropolitan is $1 Oyster Night as well. Metropolitan also will have their, um, late night menu, so lots of fun stuff is going to happen. I think it's going to be, um, a great night. So I hope to see everyone there.
That's good. Kyle?
Uh, for the guild, um, they had a meeting just yesterday, talking about redesigning their website, and how they're going to move forward for general community outreach, marketing, branding, et cetera. So it is another opportunity where we reach out from Economic Development, align. It doesn't obviously have to be exactly the same, that's not what I'm saying, but it makes sense for us to be talking and just somewhat aligned, at least, on what their direction is, and where we're going to take, um, Economic Development for the town itself. Um, so happy to help arrange kind of a meeting either at the next Economic Development meeting, or next guild meeting, whatever works out for everybody. Um, you know, I think, uh, I, I don't know if this is out of line or anything, but I think it would be healthy, anyway, for, for all of us to kind of spend a, a meeting in each other's worlds, right, in each other's committees. Just kind of say hello, who we are, et cetera. But the guild talked about how Mayor used to attend their meetings. They want to extend the invitation again for...
Shoot me the dates.
Obviously, not every meeting, right?
Yep. Shoot me the dates.
Maybe it's once a year, maybe it's once a quarter, whatever, kind of works out for everybody.
I'll come all the time.
Uh, the rest of the group is certainly welcome. I'm happy to articulate the rest of the council, um, well, and town as well. Happy to communicate days that are coming up, if you guys are interested, et cetera. Um, Chief, Rich, if, if there's an opportunity one day where you guys can come for the first five minutes, not for the whole meeting, right? And everybody said this, right, as we break out of our, of our caves that we've been in for the last couple of years, right, there's just eye-to-eye, you know, face-to-face interaction that is healthy, good enough.
Actually, it's not directed towards tariff, really, and that is that, no, um, I think it's a great idea, but sometimes, we already have...
Three people.
Three people. S- as example, the, um, the, um, yeah, the Parks Committee, uh, not the Parks Committee, but, yeah. How come I'm drawing...
Playground, economic development.
Yeah, things like that. So I, I, I'm wondering if we could, if, if somebody says, "I can attend on a certain day," what we can do so that person can attend? If, that means that somebody has to bail off?
Yeah, just talk to each other and make sure there's not a quorum at, at the guild's meeting, so that their meeting doesn't become a...
Well, but, so here's my question for you on that, because we all go to guild events, and we all should, we're not actually...
You're not discussing municipal business, but I think at a guild meeting, you could potentially...
I just learned they call those social events, and you can attend social events.
Right.
You can attend social events or chance meetings of all of you, but when you're going to something like the guild's meeting, odds are you're going to talk about municipal business, because why else, why else would you be at their meeting?
Because they want us to come and visit.
But I, I also didn't mean to imply everybody at once, right?
Yeah.
There's also the concept of too many hands in the cookie jar. So I'm, I'm not suggesting we bombard them with everybody there at one time, but, you know, if you get five minutes beginning of one of their meetings, or, uh, maybe we can invite a few of them to Economic Development, their leadership, right, their chair, et cetera. Um, it's just healthy.
Yeah. No, I don't disagree. I think it's a great idea.
So they're going to be reaching out, Janice, if they haven't already.
Yep.
Uh, I know that they, the immediate ask is, is obviously for yourself, and then if Chief or Rich have, you know, five minutes, one of the upcoming meetings, awesome. There are only, very sadly, two more Come Together Music Nights this season. Uh, it's been awesome. It's been fun. The one nice thing of no rain is we've had great Friday nights.
Yep.
Chief, can't thank you and the team enough for, for helping with the street. I know it's been, um, well, I don't know how it's been, but thank you.
[laughing]
Um, and, uh, something they asked me to bring up is the Pumpkin Fest, and I believe there is a normal request for street closure for the Pumpkin Fest, so just know that request...
Do we have a date for that yet?
Yes, uh, October 15th. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Um, October 21st. October 21st. And the time, uh, I think they thought it was somewhere around like 5 to 9 previously, but...
Usually, that's when they do it, yeah.
Yeah, because pumpkins start to drop off at 4:30 or something.
Yeah, they get dropped off early, like, right after school, until they pump things.
But that's a big one, right? That's not Lower Center, that's Main Street, right?
Yep.
So, um, just so you have that one kind of on your radar, that is going to be requested, um, if it hasn't already.
What time is that, actually, going to start?
I, I don't know, and it's the question I asked too, is like...
Just let me know.
Let's finalize the dates and...
It's 9?
Yeah.
The ti- I'll get you the times finalized, for sure.
Yeah, I think Moss is right. I think it's 6 to 9. I feel like I'm trying to be because...
Yeah, it is. And then they drop, they're dropping, while they start dropping, to your point, they drop the pumpkins off at 3 o'clock, as soon as school gets out sometimes.
Yeah. So, that one's coming. Um, you know, I can't really take credit for the farmer market idea. They reached out. I just happened to be the lucky one that received it, but I do appreciate, uh, the ideas that, that Environmental came up with. Um, you know, I'm hoping to have the fee schedule introduced soon, uh, which will, I think, be one of the first steps, in addition to the, to the insurance, right? So, um, they also only have a couple of weeks left before their season really wraps up, so, um, maybe we have an opportunity to go up there and just kind of let them know we're interested, we're still interested, we're working. I did that last two weeks ago, anyway, so they know, but we'd love to introduce the idea from Environmental as well.
The tweet at them on Sunday.
Perfect. Okay. And then, recreation, um, picnic, 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 picnic. Laura and Christina are doing a ton of work. I know they've talked with Seal. There's work to be done, no doubt about it. We'll get it done. Kathy, if they haven't reached out yet, they're going to be reaching out. It should be Christina reaching out about, uh, POs required for some of the rentals. Um, we have some questions around the helicopter.
Yep, I got a call out.
There's without a doubt some things we have to check off the list between now and the 10th, but they're, they're working their butts off. They're trying to be transparent with everything they want to do. Uh, and I owe the town some information on the band. They've got a 10-piece band coming this, this year, so we're just confirming electricity is going to be enough, um, for whatever amps they're going to have to bring, or speakers, et cetera. Um, but it's, you know, I hope everybody can make it. It's going to be as always, and as this group has done, way more of these than, than I have. It's going to be fun, and it's, it's awesome. So, hope everybody can do that. Uh, with that said, uh, insurance has come up, and, um, there are a lot of different vendors that are going to be there. So I'd like to put forth a motion to waive the tier A insurance requirements for those vendors that are going to be, um, attending as vendors for the town.
That includes Tyler.
Including Tyler.
Second?
I'm going to go with Kyle.
Kyle made the motion. Have a second. All's in favor?
I, I am going to volunteer myself, and I'm volunteering, Councilman Perloff, to tackle, move, move, like, all the insurance stuff, so that, where I'm volunteering insurance and I've been involved in the past, so, um, trying to figure out what best way to do this, and how we can figure out where to go. Um, so we aren't always waiving. I know it's been a conversation over the years, um, but, you know, it puts council and our insurance agent in a predicament, and, you know...
Everyone has insurance. It's just we've, we've...
Exactly.
Added tiers that have not been attainable by our vendors. So, any opposed?
I oppose.
Any abstentions?
Any opposed?
I oppose, yeah.
Okay.
And, no comment, no comments, sorry, ladies.
Anything else?
Um, what were you calling it?
Carpool Cinema.
Wheels to reels, or carpool cinema.
Carpool Cinema, or wheels to, wheels and reels.
I feel like that first is...
That's way too many tongue twisters for me.
Wheels, yeah, I think it's a pejorative word.
What does that mean?
Come out of my mouth.
For the draw, we can't call it a drive-in when we advertise it. We can only call it a car...
What's the...
Oh.
October 1st?
October 1st, sorry.
Hunt's Mill.
Well, if you do a horror, you can do squeals.
The hope...
Ghostbusters.
It's not a horror.
The hope is to reach a minimum of 100 vehicles, is the hope.
How many did we have the first year? Did it, I can't remember.
I think it was just south of that.
Yeah.
Just south of that.
It was over 90, yeah.
Yeah.
So their, their hope, their, their first tier goal is 100. Uh, they do not expect to exceed, and really, I think we'd have to talk about it, but they expect to keep it below 200. Um, they'd like to find a way to, um, how, how do I say this? In, um, alert, advertise to town residents first?
Yes.
Um, maybe advertise...
Email blast.
Yeah, maybe that's the wrong word, but...
Well, if you have a blackboard, that's a community all over.
Maybe the school?
Because there's going to be, there's going to be a limitation, like, we can't Because there's going to be, there's going to be a limitation, like we can't have.
Do you have a water bill coming out? Put out with water?
Depends on which.
Good section, different towns.
Yeah.
No bill just to count.
We'll figure out a way to.
Well, I mean, the point is, right, we can't have 1,000 cars.
Right.
And so, you know, it's a town event that they are targeting, the town, to invite the town first and foremost, if they can. Obviously, they won't say no to whoever is possible to say no, right? Thinking around 7:15-ish PM, I think that's about what time they're looking at, 7:15, 7:15 is what they're looking at on 10-1. And I believe that's to start the film. So I'd imagine people would start.
Getting there early.
Getting there earlier.
Are they going to do the, didn't they do, you could bring a blanket last time?
Yeah, could we encourage people to bike and bring a blanket, those are wheels.
I will, I will, I will bring it to them, thus far it's been vehicle-based.
And what, it's the, it comes through the radio, right? That's how they.
It's like a, it's like a station.
Yeah, it's, that's way beyond my technical capabilities, I got the movie.
The movie they're going to watch is Twister, just the scene when the tornado comes through the drive-in. Two people do what I was talking about. Anyway. There will be, they'll probably have to reach out about potentially purchasing candy and things like that, but they're hoping to do everything through fundraising at this point. But if it gets to that, then I will certainly make sure that they approach the town first before purchasing anything, period.
Kyle, last time when I did that, they had the volunteers that were kind of directing the traffic to a certain extent. We need to order more reflective vests, let me know who you think might be, because obviously at night, we want to make sure whoever's pointing people in the right direction.
It's an excellent question, I don't know. Certainly we'll need like the bathrooms open and things like that, right? And apparently some kind of power, right, to power the projection.
I have a vest for that, too. I just want to, I don't want to even get hit.
Do you guys work to like, with art, to like, keep it up?
We met down there last year, and we met with them, and they came up, or last time rather, they came up with a grid, if you will, a concept. It worked very well, they had different people with vests, directing all the cars in, directing them all out. It's a little bit, it's a delicate dance with all the vehicles, but I just want to make sure nobody.
They've mentioned that grid multiple times, they intend on kind of using that.
Expanding off of that.
Yeah, exactly.
Now.
They don't want to do that again.
As much as I want rain, it's nice that it's actually very dry there.
Yeah.
Now, so to support.
I know, you just jinxed us.
So, in between those is the canoe racing, right, on September 25th.
Oh, that's right.
9:25. So there's quite a few things, Rack Springing in September, there's going to be more stuff in October. Obviously, the Guild has, you know, the, at least somewhat connected the marathon and Hero Sprint, et cetera, the Pumpkin Fest, so there's just a lot of stuff going on. Chief, I sent out a list of events, so you should have it, I'm happy to send it again. And that is finally, that is finally it.
Thank you. I need to borrow waiters, if anyone's got waiters, I'm not going in the river without them. Oh, okay.
No, Sherry report.
I know Sherry report, but I'm just saying I need waiters.
I don't have any, Megan has some.
I do not.
Sherry, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Water Committee met Wednesday, well, this Wednesday, 8:17. We've slowed hydrant flushing due to the water restrictions we're currently under, but we continue to meet our timeframes for deadlines. We flushed 268 hydrants, we have 430 still to be inspected. As you heard with our resolution, our meter truck is being outfitted, and we hope to get that in the near future. That would be nice. Our last quarterly letter of water accountability went out in July. We had two water reservation applications come in. The one was for the Hunterdon County Vocational School, that's being built on the high school property. They asked for 44 gallons. The second one was a company called Beth Graff Packaging. Unfortunately, they were administratively incomplete, so they'll need to come back before they can get an approval. Our lead service deadline reporting requirements have been met, so going forward, we just have annual reporting deadlines to meet with the goal of full remediation by 2031. For the Ingramon property, all the services have been transferred. They have plans to do all the plantings and make it really pretty, but it's, you know, really hot and dry, so that's going to come when the weather's a little more favorable for the plants. We have new pumping facilities, operational at Foxfire and Foster Wheeler stations. This will allow us to monitor water usage and detect leaks better, so that's good news. Backup generators and building improvements will come in the future, hopefully in the near future. And we have preliminary plans to improve well number two in Lebanon in the works, so we will hear more about that as that continues in motion. Land Use Board heard an FAR variance and minor site plan for 280 Main Street, which is the Gold Branson Building. They asked for two parking spots in that driveway, that was granted, and their FAR variance was also granted. It'll actually make the Florida area ratio smaller than it was, or currently is. It's still above, you know, what our current threshold is, but that's why they came for a variance. So Land Use is going to meet very briefly on the 6th, just to pass that resolution. And that's all we have on the agenda for that meeting, so it'll probably be a five-minute meeting, if I had to guess. And that's all I got.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, hope you're enjoying vacation, and thank you for participating with us from vacation.
Of course, thank you.
Mayor, if I can just dovetail one thing off of what Sherry said. Maybe Foster Wheeler and Foxfire booster pumps or station equipment's nearly complete, they're doing some site work now. Once it's all done and complete, I invite everyone, we'll come and take a look, you'll really be impressed with the level of technology that's in the stations now.
So I would ask that, everyone, as soon as it's ready. Yeah, take the tour. All right, can I have a motion to approve standby and overtime?
Motion.
Roll call.
Ms. Dineen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trappigan?
Yes.
Yes, can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Dineen?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Perloff?
Yes.
Mr. Trappigan?
Yes.
Mayor Colback?
Yes. We do not have an executive session, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?